That's your bill.
No.
I'm just being proactive.
Yeah, that's yours.
Okay, I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Yeah.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, I started something.
You can do that.
We can have it.
Oh, really? Did he scrub it? Did he scrub that?
Not yet. I think I got it read. All right, uh, um, last meeting, I had the honor of swearing in our newest police officer, Jody Cartwright. Uh, I think he's gonna do well for the city and appreciate, uh, his applying here and, uh, it's great, uh, it's always great to have a new member on. With that, Brad, do you have anything from your?
That's what I was gonna talk about. He's gonna start the last week of this month. Um, he'll be doing some training the first, first few weeks and then he'll be cut out on his own, so. You probably won't see him unless you call him, cause he'll be working straight third shift. He wanted, uh, he's a third shifter now and he wanted to continue to work on third shift, so.
Granted his wish. Granted his wish. He has twenty some years of experience on?
Twenty some years, yeah. He came from Purdue Fort Wayne Police Department, so he's, he's an older gentleman and he knows what he's doing, so he'll be a good addition to the city.
What are you talking older? How old is he?
Not as old as you are.
Not as old as Dean.
I heard that. Not funny. It's true, but not funny.
So he's young, is what you're saying?
Yeah, younger than Dean, yeah.
There you go.
He's in his early fifties, so.
Good.
Yep. Yes, it is.
He'll, he'll, he'll be great, he'll be great for us, so. I'm excited and I'm excited the city hired him.
Good. So now how many offers do we have now, four?
Five.
Five.
He will be number five.
Okay.
Three full-time, two part-time.
Great.
Hopefully we can get a volunteer corps again.
That's getting tougher though.
Yeah, it is.
Rebecca was the last one, right? She's gone one.
We have volunteer cops.
Reserves.
Oh, reserves, okay.
We should have about thirty then.
Forgot.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Is there an underlying joke there somewhere?
I don't have anything. I assume I talked about whatever we did earlier.
You said you're gonna get the Christmas lights down.
I'm gonna get the Christmas lights down this week. Give my three moments, yeah. I, I'm, a lot of my crew is sick, so.
Oh.
So it's not all here.
Oh.
I was sick this whole year.
So we've been battling illness, so.
Makes sense.
Don't they know how the, uh, um, water main break on Park?
Got the water main break on Park fixed?
You wanna sort of describe that, just a little bit, very briefly?
We had that break on Park, uh, street, right there by, next to the, uh, church. Um, while we were digging that out, uh, we did find an old service line that went to, uh, house that used to sit where the parking lot was at, so. So we ended up having two leaks in the, in that hole, but, uh, we got both of them fixed with stainless steel clamps, so. But that, that water line is very shallow through there. It's only about three and a half feet deep running down that road, so. It is something to keep on the burner. That, that may need to be put in deeper eventually, just something to watch.
How deep are they supposed to vary?
Minimum's four, so. You gotta put the road, you gotta redo the road, taking the surface down, water main's only gonna be a couple feet below the, below the surface, so. So it is fairly shallow through there. We mean, I've, we've kinda known that for a few years, but. Usually when we get these deep freezes, we usually,
Yeah.
we usually break the main down there. It was not a blowout, it was a snap in the line, so. So it did snap, it just snatched the pipe right into, so.
Wow.
So, yeah. Which is typical of that, that type of break, so. We got that and then, just so we do, you guys are aware, if, if you guys see the little blue lids out, we do have transducers out on the water system. Um, we purchased those, well, in January. They're lis- they're listing to the water line, uh, lis- looking for leaks. Uh, we got nineteen of them deployed right now. Uh, most of them are on the north side of the railroad tracks. That whole side's pretty much been, it's got transducers sitting on it. Uh, it'll be a couple, three, four weeks before we kinda, that all gets finalized, but we'll listen, they're listening for water breaks, le- leaks somewhere. So, those'll go for a few months. If we don't see a whole lot, we'll start mov- we'll move them around to a different zone in the city, so. That's the game plan with those.
And we got those now because we have an issue in, or out of the ordinary than any other city would.
Correct.
But, um, it's gonna help us in a long run because you have leaks or.
Yeah, it's, it's sup- it's supposed to find the little leaks that aren't servicing, servicing right now, so. Just goes ahead of the game.
Cause there's always some.
Yeah, we, we lose, we lose probably anywhere from thirty to forty thousand gallons of water a day somewhere. From what we bill, you bill, we're about, what, one and a half million gallons a month that we don't account for on our billing system, so. We're missing water somewhere. It's just a matter of where it's at, so. Not, you know, the fu- between the fire department and, you know, what the city uses themselves, you know, we try to account for all that, we do this, some of that. Hopefully this is gonna find some of those smaller leaks that we're not, we're not seeing, so. That's the whole game plan, that is. But we do have one right now that is making noise, so there's definitely at least one leak out there right now, so.
That's good. Any questions for Ryan? Thanks, Ryan. All right, we have a couple of guests here. Monica Kelsey from Safe Haven Baby Boxes and Mariah Betts from Safe Haven Baby Boxes.
Is it our turn?
It's your turn.
Okay. I don't have to stand anyway. So, well, for the last couple of years.
Speak in the microphone, please.
I don't need a microphone, Ben. Trust me. So for the last couple of years, I haven't come up, but when we, when I started the box here in Woodburn, the city always paid the alarm bill for the box here at the fire station for mommy township. And, um, I'm just coming to see if you guys would pay it again this year.
How much is it?
We've had, we've, it's five hundred and seventy-six dollars. We've had two babies surrendered at this fire station. I think there's definitely a, a need for it to stay here. And as a nonprofit, you know, we look for others to help us out and that's, that's why we're here. That's one reason why we're here, and then there's another reason why we're here. That's the first reason why we're here. But Tim always had me bring a invoice up and the city just paid the invoice instead of paying Safe Haven Baby Boxes, so. That's what I'm asking, for the city to pay five hundred and seventy-six dollars to corset fire and security so this baby box can stay online for another year.
That's for the alarm, alarm system over there?
Correct.
Okay. I'm not gonna make any comments because.
This is something we do, have we always been doing this?
We've done it since.
Haven't done it the last two years, but.
We have.
The box has been in for almost ten, so the first few years you guys did it, and the last two years I've been kinda busy and, um, I haven't made it up here, so I ju- I just paid for it, so. Now I'm back, cause we don't leave till tomorrow morning at seven o'clock.
Okay.
We don't hit the roof.
So we need to make a movement to approve?
Yep.
I, I motion to approve, make a movement to approve their payment of that bill.
I'll second that.
Vicky made the motion, Dean seconded, all of paper, raise your hand.
Thank you.
I'll just take a copy of that.
Oh, you can have this, actually. I brought it for you.
Thank you so much.
And the second thing.
And the second thing. So, we've decided now at Safe Haven Baby Boxes that we're gonna start up Summer Fest again. And we're gonna just every year continue to do it since, you know, there's been people that have done it and then they've kinda got busy on other things, and so. We have eleven employees down there and I think between all of us, we'll be able to put it together. And, um, the first, so this year we're gonna do it with BF Goodrich. BF Goodrich is having a car show, so we're going to collaborate with BF Goodrich and do the car show with Summer Fest. It's gonna be a little bit late this year. Uh, next year we'll do it in June or July like we did, but, uh, this year, I think it's September twentieth.
Yeah. Is it September twentieth? September twentieth.
Is it September twentieth?
We finally got the date.
And so, um, so I, so I really wanted to be up here tonight to, to have it in the minutes, so that people knew if anybody wanted to help, they could just come down to the shop and, um, help. Cause we don't know what the hell we're doing.
So you, you all know we've been working with BF Goodrich to bring the car show to Woodburn, so, uh, um, it's kind of a good way to start bringing back Summer Fest, having that draw already and, um, we can have, uh, you know, since we already have people there, we can have other activities as well.
And Mariah's volunteered her time. She's the volunteer.
Is that the official name, which you'd rather call it, is Summer Fest?
I think we should change it.
I like the, I seen the pins over here on the other side and they could, used to have, uh, Woodburn Days.
Years ago, yeah.
I don't know if that's a possibility, it'd be cool.
That's when it was like Harlan Days with.
Bring some of the.
I thought we decided at our meeting Thursday what we were gonna call it, Woodburn Fall Festival.
Yeah, we, we did talk about that too.
So, yeah, something with Woodburn in, I think needs to be.
They, and Goodrich said, call it Woodburn Fall Festival featuring BF Goodrich.
It doesn't con- that date doesn't conflict with any other thing or.
Oh, we've double checked on, no, we've all double checked on it, see. Grable Days is the first, whatever they call it. The Grable Fair is the first weekend. The last weekend in September is the car show in Grable. That would've been the weekend for garbage cleanup, is, uh, um, the garage sales of the weekend before, but Kim took care of that and they moved that to the next weekend.
Oh.
So we are, they couldn't have done that garbage kick thing with, uh,
No.
with the car show all on Main Street.
Don't they usually do the garage sales the week and then the pickup the next week?
So now they're gonna have garage sales, skip a weekend and come, and then do it the next, to do the. Or the large. Um, the only thing that else is on September twentieth is Johnny Appleseed. But that's a totally different kind of fair, so I don't think that would be it.
Well, and the car, the, the car show's gonna bring its own people and then Woodburn's gonna bring more people, so I think we can just kinda piggyback this year off both, even if Johnny Appleseed is going on, so.
I don't think it's gonna be.
I don't think it's gonna affect it either. I mean, people around here want, want something in the summer to come back.
Well, we, we first picked August. I had three meetings with, um, Goodrich and, but then they found out they're negotiating a contract in August, so. That was not a good time for that, so that's when it moved to September.
So, uh, um, because of, um, copyright and the logo use, BF Goodrich will probably create the digital flyers.
They're gonna do it.
So if they can make sure their logo is correct and everything, uh, so. They're working very well with us. I'm glad we're.
Uh, Jamie Lawson and Jose Sanchez, they've been really, really nice meetings like that, but, um, matter of fact, they said they, we want those guys, that Main Street's been, with them basically, that they would come to Main Street even if we didn't, so, yeah, they're great.
So it's, uh, from now till September twentieth, it's kind of, sort of burning the midnight oil.
Well, they had talked about food trucks, that all our local food people and them would rather supply the, the food for that, that afternoon or that day. Um, including Char's, Greg's Getaway, Brian's Pizza and the Top Shop. All of them want to do food.
For, like, the, um, like, in their facilities or outside their?
Well, outside, right by their facilities, so.
The downtown part, right?
Yeah, yeah. They said that the food trucks really, their business just, there's nothing, so, and. I think that because Main Street is, our main goal is to, um, support the, the businesses of Woodburn, so.
Well, those places do so much.
Come down and support us.
They give you, got, and donate to the school. It'd be good to get, you know, do something mainly for them. They do so much for everybody else.
Yeah, yeah, so they were very excited about it when we told them, so.
Is the Little League baseball season over that time?
Yeah, September, yeah.
It's tournaments all about June, July, something like that, yeah.
Yeah, they start early, early now.
Yeah. So, Woodburn Youth League is.
Do you know when opening day is?
Uh, I didn't look. But the tournament is usually the third week of, yeah, that they have, the tournament at the park and it's till, then, through July sometimes, so, right at the park to ano- another tournament, but. That should all be done well before September.
Oh, and of course Lions.
We give them a date that we're gonna be.
Lions, of course.
Doing it.
You can't have a festival without the Lions on it.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm gonna tell the heritage of the Lions, which is Monroeville and Holwood, they do ice cream, so we gotta contact them and see if they've got that date.
Well, what, well.
Well, thank you for taking on that responsibility. I think, uh, that's, that gives me implied tasks also, I know.
That basically includes you. You're part, you're part of the eleven employees.
Pretty sure she said the eleven of us to say anything.
Well, the nice, another nice thing about Goodrich being a part of, they say they have, because they have so many employees that are interested, they'll have plenty of volunteers to work their part of in the, our festival, so. We don't have to have volunteers to take care of a lot of the stuff that goes with the car shows.
We have eleven of us, so.
Well, anyhow, that was a relief, cause there is a lot of stuff that they do, so they're hoping to have a computer program that will, I assume you're gonna scan in something to it. It can pick out how people vote then, so it'll know the crowd's favorite and who gets first place or is, and then second place or that.
Using AI probably.
That's what I'm saying, that's what we're doing too. Yeah, so that was another very good plus for, yeah.
Well, all good stuff. Looking forward to it.
Yeah. It's just gonna cost us some cash. That's coming out of your paycheck. Mine?
Yeah.
Mariah?
I had written, no, I couldn't write, couldn't write quick enough, so.
All right, nobody else has any questions or anything?
Well, then I'll keep going.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, he had suggested that the reserves could possibly provide entertainment items.
The reserves. You talking about, um, what Jose brought up?
The rock climbing, the, the bouncy house.
That's unconfirmed. I have to see, I don't even know how, how to line that up, but I will get that.
Okay, cause since I have two other people that could do bouncy houses, I don't wanna call them till I can do it.
Okay, that's fine.
Because we've been doing the Mother's Day festival, I've been getting calls from different people for entertainment type things now. I'm not sure how my number got out, but anyhow, um, the next thing, the major thing is, uh, since we wanna do it on Main Street, we have to close down Main Street, which is a state highway.
Yep.
And so, uh.
Those are our tasks. We had to first find out, make sure they're not redoing Main Street during that time. And then we have to.
And I've heard that you can call them or contact them and say, we've got this planned and they will rearrange it if you tell them.
Probably.
Far ahead of time to do that.
Probably.
Okay, so that was another role, you know, how to schedule that, so.
Did we get the Three Rivers barricade last time to?
Yeah.
Draft this up, uh, permit to where they would, the indot would allow.
Yeah, I have an actual form from indot I had to fill out to say that we were doing it, then we had to hire Three Rivers barricade to actually do it.
Yeah, to implement the whole plan, yeah, yeah. I thought we got one of them too to help us with the plan. Where they, where they had to be and all that junk.
Yeah.
I remember, I remember it was pre, it was pre, it was an intel, intel thing we had to have done.
Yep. But, I mean, we should start that several months ahead, you know, put that plan out. And then we did that in the spring for, um, the clock tower dedication and, uh, it was like right down to the wire.
Yeah, your anniversary and all that stuff.
Um, Main Street is also talking to the churches that are in the, this area too, to let them know we're doing it, to see if they've got weddings they're doing planned, because we're hoping that people can use their parking lots to come to the event later on. And then also Goodrich is gonna play, pay for the porta potties. We're not quite sure where all of those should be, um. And how many, we're hoping that maybe they can tell us how many we're gonna need. We'd like to use the company that's right down Bull Rapids, since they have a Woodburn address. I don't know if you ever go that way, but there's all this, these things setting in their, like, their backyard.
Yeah.
Um, they contacted Main Street this year, cause they wanted to be in a punk contest, so that, and then they said, well, do you ever need, and like, our Mother's Day, that's supposed to start, and we only did it for a couple hours, but we didn't. I said, well, I'm sure that, you know, things coming up, so. And I'm waiting to get a hold of the Main Street occasions to see what their status is gonna be too, to. If they have nothing, then we'd like to use their parking lot too. So they, they were on vacation last week, so they couldn't, but I'm still gonna try calling them too, so. So anyhow, Main Street's been, cause like I said, I've had three meetings down with Goodrich and so we've been doing all this, but. Um, we had someone ask us about craft booths and I said, I'm not really, I don't know, what, what do you got? The community center is not scheduled for anything that day right now, but they said it's filling up fast, so. If somebody would like to organize some kind of craft fair.
Well, and, see, I didn't even know you guys were even working on this, so, I'm, cause last year we didn't have it and, so we were like, let's do this. So I'm glad that I, that you're picking this back up again and starting it. I didn't know that you were. So I just heard, I just talked to Joe after the meeting on Thursday and, um, and he had said that you were there, that you were coming tonight. I just didn't realize that you.
That we've been working on.
Yeah, that you've been working, which is great news, honestly, because we were like completely wrong, we didn't know, but financially, we can back this, so, um.
Well, like I said, they're gonna cover the cost of the, the car, the car show.
Right, 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 but I'm saying like the, the Woodburn Fest or Summer Fest or whatever, so.
We are gonna need tables and chairs, although, um, I, my understanding is the field house or whatever, the park building, or they have tables and chairs. I don't know what the official name of it is, I forgot.
The shelter house.
The shelter house. So we could probably get tables and chairs from there to set up downtown for the food, so.
When's the next Main Street meeting? Is that?
Thirteenth, I believe.
Maybe, maybe you could come. It's eight o'clock right here.
That, we're, uh.
It's always the second Thursday of the month.
I'm gonna tell.
Oh my God, I'll be in town.
I heard it, I heard it.
Put it in right now.
I heard it.
She's in town.
I'm gonna put that in a minute, put it in right now.
Put that in a minute.
Unfortunately, in the same time, I didn't pick the time.
What the hell? That's early.
I know, I agree, cause I'm retired and.
It's on a Thursday. You have to work anyways.
Um, we have several.
I was thinking that, I thought, then she worked.
And that was the only time Woodburner missed. So they, so they can get back with their businesses. That's the only reason we do it that early.
As a, I, I'm in, I'm at a shop, so it's okay. I was, I was just, I was doing it at a time.
Well, I'm usually not dressed even by that time, so. I've had a little hard trying to get used to. But we have a really nice group of people and, you know, we, they work really well together.
So I'm glad, I'm glad it's coming back, cause that was something that.
Well, we had said whenever somebody wanted, was interested and Joe said, said to me, you know, let's, look at the car show thing, and I said, well, we can help with that, yeah, so, but. Some of these other things, I don't know. Um, I know Jody Zern organized that craft show they had here two years ago at the community center. I didn't know if I should contact her and see. I know last year they said she was taking classes and teaching, but she wasn't able to do it, so. I thought maybe you guys would know something about craft fair, like, I like to go to them.
I was gonna say, I like to go to them.
I know, that's, that's me too.
Yeah, we can do that. So, okay, so then I'll, I'll come on the thirteenth, if I'm on the thirteenth and.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah, we'll see where we can help, you know.
Divide up whatever.
Yeah, whatever, whatever you guys need us to do, so.
No, cause I can't get my computer now.
Can you think of anything else as far as Ryan and I asked you about driveways?
That's how I usually get.
People's driveways on Main Street.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be able to block those off. The biggest thing will be the streets.
Yeah, we might need to walk it, you know.
I don't even know how big of an area you're blocking off. You're wanting to block off Bull, part of Bull Rapids also.
We gotta talk to people too, make sure.
Most people's, most people's drives are off.
It's just putting me in.
Downtown, they're not allowed, then they can access some of the alleyway.
What do you think about the, I always just call them the yellow apartments.
Temporarily allow, maybe we could temporarily allow parking in the alleyway for that day or something, you know? So people can at least walk in.
Yeah, the, the biggest one won't be those yellow, yellow retirement apartments.
I wondered about those.
But if you stop, if you stop short of that, I don't know how far you're going, if you don't, that would be, they'd be the ones that'd be affected, I guess. But they got, there's parking in the back.
Is that right?
Not all of them, but.
He's going home to get.
That'd be a thing, they'd be notified.
Right.
He said I needed it.
Especially now.
Yeah, they'd be the only one that'd.
Big park in the old church too, down Nastree.
Yeah, yeah.
To put their cars out there.
There's several little spots behind there, that they could park differently to get more in there, but.
Yeah.
All right, anything else, Jane?
I can't think of anything else. Like I said, I, I've gone down this list every time I've been to one, one day and change, like, what about this, what about that?
We definitely need to have, uh, the parade.
Well, we can't do a parade with the car show.
Yeah, be in the way.
Well, we need to drive around.
Can we go down?
We'll discuss that later.
Or, or Hickory. I mean, we built the Hickory, why can't we go down Hickory Street, right?
It'll take away, it'll take away from downtown though.
We talked about.
We can talk, we can.
Yeah, yeah, so we could.
They said no way down Main Street with the.
I'm, I'm thinking Hickory is a good choice.
Cause they're gonna be setting up at eight in the morning, unless the parade ends at like seven in the morning or something like that, you know?
I, yeah.
Thank you.
That's your welcome. Yeah, I, we're, we're at.
It's been on Front Street. Yeah, they're running the park.
We probably just need to talk these details over together and stuff.
Although I will, the back lanes are on vacation, so definitely.
Yeah, updates from, um, New Allen Alliance.
And they would like, I wanted to invite you specifically as well. They'd like to have leadership in the different cities or towns there if they can.
A week from tomorrow?
Yes. It's always the second, two, the, at eight o'clock.
Okay.
Homestead. Administration Building for, uh, East Allen.
Oh, this is the.
New Allen Alliance.
We're gonna talk about where we go, you know.
Since the others didn't work.
What.
Maybe I can bring some, some, talk about some of the things we're doing too and, yeah.
Certainly, you know, what, what should the New Allen Alliance be doing, you know, since we're not gonna have the executive director doing that stuff as volunteers, what? What would the towns like to see us doing, cause they're committed, you know?
Where's that, where's that held at now?
It's at the administration building for Haven.
East Allen Administration Building.
Homestead and going to the parking lots.
It's where it used to be, yeah.
Okay.
New administration building for East Allen County Schools in New Haven. Got it.
I think it's a D or something. There'll be, there'll be an email coming out, Mike, and four or two, make sure you got it.
Okay, yep.
Address and stuff there.
Awesome. You could shoot me a text.
I can do that.
Appreciate that, thank you. Anything else?
No, I wanted to talk to you about something else after.
Oh, sure. Update on Lynnwood, I hear, I hear they're, they're sort of like.
Yeah.
Kinda cleaned up and not cleaned up and.
Other than that, it's. Don't know what to do with them, yeah.
Well, I showed you an email, I can follow up with Kevin, also I email, well, you, you saw the email I sent him on the second, I think, of January. All right, anything else?
I don't know.
All right. Terry, you have an update on, on some of the, um, talks we've had with, with, um, Ag Plus and whatnot?
Yeah. Yeah. You know, a month ago, we. I think we passed a resolution or something that we would.
Thanks, we.
Thank you.
Be able to, um, set up a contract to receive that property based on us getting the, the government funds, the OCR funds to demolish the pro, the plant. So I went ahead and got in touch with Kevin, talked to him, put it down on the phone, then I met with him a week ago, or a week, week ago tomorrow. And pretty much it's kinda like an offer to purchase with no money, we're not paying any money or anything, so. He's supposedly gonna have that tomorrow. Then we can take that to Ag Plus and start the process to, to, to get it over to us. However, there is a contingency in there that we received the OCR monies, the government monies, um, to demolish the project. And I got some estimates and to get that money, we had to have three estimates and they range from three seventy to around six hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh my God.
And one was like four seventy. I thought it'd be eight hundred or nine hundred dollars.
Yeah, a couple of million bucks there to take that down, yeah.
Yeah. One more time, you said three seventy to what?
Three seventy to around six hundredish, yeah.
To take it down.
To take it down.
To demolish everything?
That's, yeah, that, well.
The concrete building.
Now you, I think you're thinking if we got it, you probably wanna keep some of those pole buildings for one of them, right?
Well, yeah, yeah, whatever's going on. Yeah, I thought they were taking the metal ones out, but.
What was the?
Not the buildings, the bins they, they want to.
They're taking the bins out?
They say.
So what are we tearing down then?
That concrete.
Just the building?
The most expensive part.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, okay.
And the office, yeah, the elevator.
So it's not the office?
Yeah, the office and the concrete structure, yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay.
So we'd like to keep those buildings, maybe we can do something with them or rent those or lease those out. You know, warehouse spaces, three to four bucks a square foot per year and you got eight thousand square feet in most of those buildings, so. Then we can talk about the bins, one or both. We might wanna talk to them about keeping one. I hate to say too much at this point without, till we talk to them.
Why would we need a bin? What would we use it for?
Well, first off, if we demolish it, we gotta ha- have that thing in green grass for five years before we can develop it. So if we keep the one site, we could lease it. We cover some of, some of our money, because even if we get OCR money, we're gonna pay ten percent co-pay. So if it's five hundred thousand, there, we're gonna pay fifty. So, um, that would be a way of recovering that.
Amazing, for that much property.
There are three, three and a half acres.
Yeah, perfect. Right in downtown.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's a very good space, plot for Woodburn. I mean, it's a, it's, it's a great spot, I mean, do something with it, it's right downtown, yeah.
So tomorrow, he's supposed to have the thing written up, you know how attorneys are, like, seven days might turn into fourteen, I understand, so. Um, if we get that, hopefully it's okay, then we can go over there and talk to him then and try to make a deal.
Did you mention, have you mentioned to the people at Ag Plus that that's where we're moving to? Like if we're gonna, have you, have you communicated that with them, that we're gonna have a contract made up that if we can get the OCR money, we're gonna move forward with this and are they okay with that?
Well, I implicated that. I kinda hate to tell people that on the phone or in an email, exactly.
Yeah.
But I think that the OCR monies are available in March, we're gonna miss that one, also in September. So hopefully we can get into that window. And the OCR representative thinks we have a, we'll probably get the money, she doesn't see why we wouldn't. You never know until you get it, right? So I'd like to have this thing stretch out, this contingency until at least November, maybe December. And maybe expand it if, if we need to. So hopefully they're not watching this thing tonight, but, um, that's kinda where we're at. And let's say we get our hands on it, or somewhere in the process, Joe, you probably know, you guys know what to do here. We gotta have three hea- or two hearings, two public hearings with the community to tell them what we're planning on doing with that property. That's part of the requirement to get the OCR monies. Plus there'd be extra money available through the OCR to secure it until we tear it down, in other words, put steel plates over the, the doors and weld up some stuff, cut some ladders off and stuff like that, so.
Ryan can do that.
Yeah.
No problem.
Get the torque out.
Right after it gets the lease, though.
Yeah.
Ryan, Ryan, you can do anything, right? You have plenty of time.
So it is risky to a point, but I think we can work through it.
Wh- what is it gonna run us to do the grant? Do you have a feeling that?
Well, we have that person on that, that Groupon retainer. And I don't know, um, you know, I guess until we burn out the retainer, probably then. I think we paid, what, five thousand dollars at this point?
Oh, we have?
Yeah, she's getting a, she's getting her OCR certification and gonna follow up and see if she's got that.
That should've happened last month, according to her.
You know who did it? Who did the, who did it last time, do you remember?
Who did what last time?
Writing the OCR grant.
Christie Sturz.
That was all, yeah, that was all through New Allen Alliance.
Sorry.
She's still, she's still working?
No.
The attorney said too, we could use some TIF money if we needed to.
Yep.
So I don't know what your plans are with all that, so.
You get extra TIF money?
No, we could use the TIF money and take that down.
I don't know how that works out. This is TIF money, there's, you get a hundred dollars for that.
We, we, we accumulate more money than that though, through the county. We, that's what we use right now. There's probably, I don't even know what's sitting in the TIF right now.
Yeah, we have two TIFs.
Yeah, it's probably something, something to get our hands on, see how much money is actually sitting in there.
I think another thing too, with a couple things, we have to get an asbestos permit or we can't put a bulldozer out there. I guess that's easy to get. They, the estimators, and I, I would agree, I don't think there's any asbestos in there. Um, the second thing is, I think you worked on it, Joe, we have to get a contamination.
Yep.
Test down the soil.
From my demo, that comes to all the mayor's roundtables, uh, wrote down all the information that I needed, so.
Okay.
I can get, uh, a specific report.
So somewhere all that stuff comes into play, so.
All right, any questions?
I asked mine, I think.
Do you guys approve minutes and all that stuff?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
We're getting way ahead of the game.
You got pay bills too.
We're stepping it out.
Keep us on track. Keep us on track, right?
It's never the same format, is it?
Do you have to do some kind of motion thing, go forward with it, start the process?
I think we.
Counsel or?
We did last.
We did.
Did last.
Oh, you did.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
He's kinda giving up an update, so, yeah.
So we'll get with them and I guess if they come back, wanna do this or that, then I'll get back with you and. Or maybe a couple of us can go over there, so, might be better. Ryan, you wanna go?
Let me know.
Take the hat, that'll be good. His uniform.
All right, Matt?
Yes, we have two sets of minutes, one from the last special meeting and one from one six. We also have two batches of bills as well. So if you guys want to, we'll do the earlier ones from last month. One six minutes and one twenty warrants. I moved to approve the minutes from January sixth.
Second. Nikki, approve the minutes?
I'm a proxy.
Approve the minutes?
Yeah.
We're all getting our computers set up, so we're copanas.
We're kinda caught up in that. All this coming and going there.
Okay, and the bills?
Bills from one twenty, twenty twenty-five, uh, over, uh, bills over five hundred. Our American Pump Repair, four thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars. Arthur J. Gallagher, five hundred eighty-one dollars. Boy Storms, five hundred eighty dollars. Chemical Services, three thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars and twenty cents. Uh, Elon Financial Services, eight hundred twelve dollars and seventy-two cents. Uh, Indiana Department Environmental Management, six thousand six hundred sixteen dollars and forty cents. Indiana Michigan Power for four thousand four hundred forty-one dollars. Uh, National Oil and Gas, one thousand sixty-five dollars and forty-eight cents nationwide, that's pretty long. Nipco, one thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Underground for one hundred thirty-six thousand dollars, one, one hundred thirty-six thousand, one hundred thirty-five dollars. Utility Supply for five hundred forty-five dollars and twelve cents. Waste Management for ten thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars and seventy-four cents. Woodburn Hardware for seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. I'll make a motion to pay the bill.
Second.
All is in favor to pay the bills, raise your hand.
That's everybody.
That's everybody.
And then.
Minutes from. Special meeting.
I'll move to approve the minutes from January twentieth.
All is in favor to approve the minutes?
It's my turn to steal a pen, this one.
That's all right, yes it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Maybe ten dollars. What's this up here? I'm confused.
Yeah, one, just the last, this is like a little one.
Oh, so this is.
Okay, uh. Second set of warrants?
This is one, this is the sixth, this is the twentieth, so. Yep. The February third warrants, Baker Tilly for two thousand two hundred five dollars. Cent House for five hundred seventy-one dollars and six cents. Uh, Colonial Life for one thousand two hundred thirty-one dollars and seventy cents. Uh, the government leasing, it's for the Streetsweaver, forty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and thirteen cents. Uh, Grant Cowan's reimbursement for the new officer's gear, six hundred twenty-three dollars. Hatch, H, nine hundred eight dollars and seventy cents. Indiana Michigan Power, four thousand ninety-one dollars and thirteen cents. Uh, John, I have no idea how to say that last name. Thistle Weight, one thousand six hundred dollars.
What was that for?
That was for the, um.
Charge.
Charge, a crazy.
Oh, oh.
The crazy, yeah. Little Link, eight hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents. The miscellaneous, those charges that stuck from twenty twenty-four, there's a bunch of extra stuff was in there. Five hundred fifty-five dollars and thirty-one cents. Nationwide, one thousand three hundred fifty dollars and eighty-four cents. Our Reliance I O for six hundred seventy-four dollars. Underground, one thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars. US Bank for fifty-nine thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars. Utility Supply for one thousand one hundred forty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents. Verizon Wireless for five hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents. Wild Ox for five hundred seventeen dollars and fifty cents.
Move to approve.
Second. All is in favor, raise your right hand. It's everybody.
It is everybody.
Anything else?
I will, you know, I have to say, for the warrants, I'll start printing these off. The only reason I printed two of them this time, I thought we were gonna read them on the twentieth. Um, that's why there's two.
Connect shortening.
But we have the one month, one meeting months, it'll be one really long.
It's hard to get used to.
Set of warrants, so. Well, there were two of these.
Yeah, there's two minutes.
Two minutes, two minutes. Yeah, just remember a special meeting, we don't talk about anything, but what the special meeting's called for.
Two minutes.
All have. The other thing on the, um, agenda was already completed, the plat, um, I called county and then picked it up. They had three signatures, I put down John and Dean as absent on there, so. So, yeah, it's true.
Okay.
All right.
Great.
Uh, Dan, I see you sent an email on the update on Lifeways?
Yes.
Kind of a little bit of wording you need to get, uh, clar- clarified on there, it looks like?
Yeah, just, uh, some clarification separating the city's real estate and buildings from the Lifeways. Structure that they're gonna be responsible for. Uh, we get that cleared up. That was the last outstanding thing that Adam or Barry had noticed in the contract that could use some cleanup, so. Uh, when we get that back from Kevin, um, we're just waiting on, uh, the delivery of the trailer and. It to be ready so they can, and then whatever they need for that permit, I mean.
Yeah, whether they're out with it, so.
Yeah. I'll touch base with Adam and see if he's got any clarity on that.
So this is gonna be put in place before school's over?
Probably not. It'll, but.
Next year.
It'll give them an opportunity to get it in, get it stocked and.
All right.
Cause it does need, the trailer does need cleaned up a little bit, so. But, uh, I mean, can't really pour concrete right now anyways, so, not effectively. So, yeah, that's kinda where that is, but, uh.
They're pouring concrete out there?
No, he said he can't do it.
They're going to.
They're gonna pour a concrete pad for that?
No, just runners.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, it'll just have two runners, or actually probably four runners because it's double wide, so, but. Yeah, that's where that sits.
Great.
All right. Anybody have anything else? I obtained a motion to, uh, adjourn.
So moved.